All right, so we'll start with, sorry. Um, start with a roll call?
Oh, I can't do it like this.
Okay. Um, I'll call out the names and just say if you're here. Oops. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much, Alex. All right, roll call of council members to establish a quorum. We've got, um, if you're here, say here, Laurel Hill Ward.
Here.
Right, and, um, Leanna Glender.
Here.
Um, Amber Brown.
Here.
Tricia Atteatura.
Here.
And we are missing, and Vicky Wannacott here. And we're just missing, um, Chelsea then, right? All right, I think we have a quorum, don't we?
Yes.
Thank you. And the invocation, the school verse is read like this. "This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here. Love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build the school." Do we have agenda modifications?
I do have an agenda modification. We may remove the closed session. I spoke with Charity today, she does not have an update for it.
Could you repeat that? There was some interference.
Um, we can remove the closed session. Charity will not be with us today. She did not have an update ready.
Okay. All right, so there's no closed session today. Do we need to have a motion? To accept that modification?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we can move if we need to. I don't think so either. Alrighty, and consent agenda is approved as is. Do we have any audience to address the council?
Vicky, do you need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Um, Laurel, we're not quite there yet. We have the audience to address the council.
Oh, okay. My apologies.
Right. And I don't know, Laurel, but we'll figure it out. No audience members have come forward to address the council. So we move to two-point consent agenda. Uh, we have no changes. All right, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is? Laurel has, you have to state your motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Tricia, I'll second.
Thank you, Tricia. All right, um, I will call your name and you say what you say. Laurel Hill Ward.
Approve it. Yes.
Vicky Wannacott, aye. Alexandra Archer. No, no, so sorry. Amber Brown, sorry. Amber?
Aye.
And Tricia?
Aye.
Leanna?
Leanna, aye.
Great, and that's all of us, right? Yeah. Okay. And moving on to item number three, governance, uh, finance committee report, Amber Brown. Did you have something to share with us?
So we talked a lot about ADA and our numbers and kind of looking forward on that.
Excuse me, there's a background, sorry, there's a background noise. I'm not sure what it is, but it's making it difficult to hear.
It's Alex typing. When she types, we hear the keyboard pounding.
Okay, let me see if.
Can you hear better now if I'm typing? Can you hear me now?
No.
No, we can't, and that's, it's better.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I can get the wrong microphone connected, sorry. So we talked about enrollment, um, we talked about the marketing plan, um, and, let's see, I'm trying to think. It was a pretty short meeting.
Okay.
It was pretty, yeah, it was pretty short. We, we got through it pretty quick, so that was.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item 3.2, the parent council report from Tricia.
Um, yes, so, uh, parent council, they're still establishing their reps for the class, I think most of that's been done now at this point. Um, and I'm trying to remember, I think last time we elected Alicia is going to be the chair for that. And so she started this last meeting. Uh, they talked about the Halloween dance. Um, and there's a student council now, and they're, I think, preparing, being involved in that Halloween dance, so that's exciting. I know there's a lot of people excited about that. Um, I guess it was forever ago. Um, and then Harvest Festival, right, which happened last Friday, and so there was discussions about that, um, as well. And it turned out so good. Yeah, it did turn out really good.
It was really nice.
Yeah, wow, we kids had a lot of fun.
And they kind of did a deep brief on the open house that happened, uh, and everybody really liked it. All the parents that, you know, had comments really liked it, they really enjoyed that they actually got to, um, see all of the teachers, and they enjoyed it outside. So, um, that was a huge plus, um, for everybody, so. And I think that is pretty much it, so.
All right, thank you, Tricia. I really thought the Harvest Festival was a really nicely planned occasion.
Yeah, yeah.
Really a pleasant, pleasant thing.
It was a good turnout.
Yeah, I thought too. I mean, yeah, there was a really good turnout, too.
Yeah. And I, um, 3.3, policy review from Susan. We've got four items.
Right, that's, uh, on our improving our policies list. These are, uh, four policies. The first one is on air quality, and this is, um, how we make the decision about, about when to go to and inside lunch. Um, and this is a second read, so you can approve this one.
Right. Do we have any questions? Any comments?
No, this is Tricia. I'll make a motion to approve the air quality policy. This is Amber, I'll second it.
Thank you, ladies. All right, and Laurel Hill Ward.
Aye.
Vicky Wannacott, aye. Amber Brown.
Aye.
Tricia Atteatura.
Aye.
And Leanna.
Leanna Glender, aye.
Leanna Glender, thank you. And that is all of us. Good job. And next we have
A policy on child abuse, and this is the first reading of that policy.
So Susan, I know you've been working a lot on policies, so do you have like a list of policies you're just kind of going through reviewing and updating as I do?
We do.
I know that you've been working on a lot of them.
Yeah, so we're moving, you know, we've done a lot of work two years ago with, um, on the employment policies, so. Um, and so now we're focusing on the student-related policies, so that's one piece. And then any that happened to come up that were like, oh, we need that policy, then we, we make them required.
So Susan, I have a question. Are you, um, I, I just, i- it's curiosity only, are you availing yourself of like Chico Unified's policy? How are you, um, going about establishing this particular policy?
Yes, we take a look at, I, I used to do about three different districts and look at them and compare. Now I'm pretty much down to just looking at what Chico Unified does, because they have a good, um, process. We, so we've taken their list of policies and have a list of these are the ones we have, and are looking at those that they have, and then, um, reviewing them for charter school appropriateness, for Waldorf appropriateness. So this one is very, very close to what Chico Unified would do, because this is a, you know, an expectation, mandated reporter is an expectation of all schools, so it's very close to what they would have.
I, I just want to acknowledge, it's a lot of work, and I know, Susan, that you're working hard on it as well, and, and there are some districts that just, um, hire it done, so thank you for the work that you're putting into it.
You're welcome.
How do you qualify to be a mandated reporter?
If you work for a school, you are a mandated reporter. It's a requirement of your job.
Automatically, okay.
Yeah, and there are other organizations that that's true of as well.
Right, right. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All right, this is our first read. We'll look at it again next month, I imagine. It's very clear and concise. Next is 3.4. Item.
3.
3.3. Oh, I've got so many leaves right now.
So this one is an update, so it's also a first read.
It's also a first read, yeah.
Yeah.
One border. To make the employee assignment.
So we've had, we took a back, a look at this policy, we had some situations over, we were, um, hiring like a brand-new, um, sub, and we're giving them leave before they started working. And that didn't, um, seem to be best practice for the school, so that's, um, that was what the, the language in green there is about addressing. No one ever took it, but it just didn't seem like a good idea.
All right. Any questions, comments?
Nope.
All right, that's a first read on the leave policy. Employee assignment, this is another policy.
So this was just really bringing the language to be clearer, um, more clearly aligned to, um, labor law. Um, we had, not, let's see, working with a five-hour workday. Um, that we, we had non-exempt employees all get the five hours, but it's really only those who work more than a five-hour workday, which was the practice we were using. So, um, we adjusted it to match the practice and the labor law. And I would tell you that these three are all from reviewing the employee handbook and realizing we needed to do some updates, so that's why we're going back to some employee issues again.
All right. Thank you for being so vigilant, keeping everything up to date.
Thank you.
All right, questions, comments?
It's good to meet. Yep.
And Markel Insurance Student Accident Policy Renewal.
So this is, um, one of our insurance policies, um, and this is for student accidents. So this is an ongoing contract that we've had, but we do need to bring it to you for approval.
The same coverage, and yeah, we did change it again, we just like, yeah. This is Tricia. I'll make a motion to approve the student accident policy.
I'll second. Laurel seconds.
All right, Laurel Hill Ward.
Aye.
Vicky Wannacott, aye. Amber Brown.
Aye.
Tricia Atteatura.
Aye.
Leanna Glender.
Leanna Glender, aye.
All right, thank you. Good. And the next item.
So I'll speak a little bit to the COVID response update. Um, not a lot of news since our last meeting. We did have one more, um, case of exposure in a classroom, so we've had four altogether now. Um, I did, after our last meeting, one of the parents who spoke reached out to me and gave me the information on a, the, um, unofficial Butte County COVID response website and how to, um, get our numbers up on that. So I was able to do that fairly easily and got the information from, um, the gentleman that's running the website. So we are now up there with a couple of other charters and Chico Unified, and I think that satisfied, um, that particular parent, which was one that spoke last time's desire to have it more, um, out there. And it's, it will be a pretty easy thing for me to be able to do, so, um, we will continue. We haven't, um, you know, overall, again, we continue to have a pretty safe, um, campus. Um, we're not seeing any transfer between students or students to, um, staff or staff to students. We did have our first onsite COVID testing today with a nurse, so that was, um, was, um, felt like a good step forward, got that done. Um, and, um, we did have, of course, the, we were affected by the protests yesterday. We had about, um, uh, 28% of our students were not here. I do not yet know how many were because of the protests. Um, but I'm, we'll go through and get that information and, um, pass that on to charter, um, advocates in Sacramento, so they're aware of how much that's affecting us, and, um, and I did have a few parents, I know that it did happen, because I had a few parents reach out to me and tell me specifically that that's what they were doing yesterday, so, um, you know.
There was also a parent with a sign in front of the school.
There was a parent with a sign in front of the school, yes. So, but she was back today, happy as planned, so, you know, I, people that spoke to me really spoke about how much they love the school and how concerned they are about, um, being asked or being expected to vaccinate when the vaccine has not even, has not been approved yet. So certainly can understand their concerns and their, um, fears, and, um, however, I want kids in school, that's my response.
Right.
Yeah.
Great job of getting on the COVID reporting, uh, that unofficial website. I'm glad that was a simple process.
Yeah.
All right. 3.6, S R 3 expenditure plan.
This is a plan we need to approve before the end of this month. Um, this has gone to finance committee, but since it went to finance committee, um, I did, uh, get some, um, direction and advice on a couple of, uh, of edits. The, uh, finance part of it is not changed, but I did add some information about who we reached out to in our community and engagement. And I actually, I went from just actions to connecting the actions to the plan, so it's really less, there's some language in there. Um, it's the actual goals and so forth have not been changed.
Okay. And we need a mo, do we have discussion? Do we have questions? Can we have a motion to accept the S R 3?
This is Amber. I'll make a motion to accept the S R 3 expenditure plan.
Thank you.
This is Laurel, I second.
Great. And a vote, no further discussion or questions? Laurel Hill Ward.
Aye.
Vicky Wannacott, aye. Amber Brown.
Aye.
Tricia Atteatura.
Aye.
Leannic Glender.
Aye.
Great, thank you all. Good job. And, um, we have renewal extensions for C U S D.
Right, so as part of the COVID response to COVID, this, and the fact that, um, testing has not been able to be that done well for a couple of years. They extended the, um, renewal time period by two years. So, um, Chico Unified reached out to me this month and asked that we update the M O U with them to reflect that change. So we're now, you can see the, um, the italicized notwithstanding renewal, um, between January 20 and 2025, that's our new renewal date. Um, so this is, is, uh, acknowledging that. And formalizing it.
All right, and do we need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Do we have questions or comments? Can we have a motion?
This is Tricia. I'll make a motion to accept the renewal extension for C U S D from four, or.
Thank you. A second?
Uh, this is Amber, I'll second it.
Thank you, Amber. All right, and another vote. We're just voting up a storm today. Um, Laurel Hill Ward.
Aye.
Vicky Wannacott, aye. Amber Brown.
Aye.
Tricia Atteatura.
Aye.
And Leanna Glender.
Leanna Glender, aye.
Thank you.
Chelsea Parker, aye.
Chelsea, you made it. All right, Chelsea. We are on item 3.8. And, uh, yes, Susan has info from the M C two marketing proposals.
So we've been talking about, sort of in piecemeal ways, continuing, continuing our marketing. And so this last month, I asked M two to reach out with a more comprehensive plan, and, um, we discussed this at the finance committee, that's the thing we missed, document. Um, and so they made some adjustments to it, and this is the estimate for, um, that plan.
So I know we approved a plan prior, is this just revamping those numbers, or this is an entirely new plan?
This is a new plan.
Okay. Just for clarification sake on that, this isn't, this is a new plan that builds upon the plan we already have, right? This isn't like negating what the work we've done and redoing that. It's, we've done, we've executed one plan, and now we're hoping to start another plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, in our last plan, if you remember, we, um, did a lot of work on the language and the presentation, and, um, worked on the website and so on, and the language, and so we, we've built all that. Um, we started, uh, some advertising, I think it was Google that we started, and, um, have started seeing that, and people are talking about it out there. And so, and so we're not, right now, posting on Facebook and, um, and Instagram, but we are not advertising. So this would give us some Facebook ads as well as the Google, um, and then has the first portion you see as our expected monthly, the cost of that. Um, and, and they're helping us with the social media campaign.
That's exciting. Um, how does our budget look for supporting this?
Well, um, we have, um, our marketing budget is, um, we've expended.
Right.
And so we would need to move, put more money in that. We are looking at cuts in our, our reductions in income. So I can't say, oh sure, we have plenty of money, let's do that. On the other hand, um, as Jim would say, you know, we're in a situation where, um, statewide, and especially in this community, we are losing enrollment. And so a good use of funds is to go ahead and do some marketing to get the numbers out there. So, um, and, you know, when, when my budget guy says, yeah, you probably need to do that, then I feel pretty good about it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, because we talked about this a lot in finance, and I wanted to see some different things on this, um, like different options, and find out some feedback of what we did get from it. But the, um, enrollment numbers are really down, and it's not just Blue Oak. Um, and, I mean, even when you go to kindergarten, I really noticed it today, like, which, you know, kindergarten feeds the rest of our grade. So, I, budget or not, I think if you look at the numbers and how much it costs, and then how much we're losing when we don't have students here. Yeah. It's, yeah, it's huge. I meant more like, do we have money else? Oh, yeah, I, I know, Jim, I know too much, I just was saying. Some to add to marketing. Yeah, I'm just saying in addition, I just feel, yeah, I just feel like it's definitely something, um, that we're gonna have to spend, and it's gonna pay off. But, um, yeah, but those enrollment numbers are.
I can address that specific question, Chelsea, Jim and I talked about it. And where we are in the year, it's that, doing that work, saying, here, we have some money here, we're not gonna spend it, moving it over, over there. Because it's October, um, we're not really there yet. We can't say, oh, look, we only, we're gonna have 5,000 extra in P G D, because it's been a mild winter. We don't know that yet.
Right.
So, um, it's hard right now to move.
Okay.
Information, and there's things like materials and supplies, I think I've shared this in finance. Because of where we are with needing to support students, um, I'm not, I'm, we are looking and spending more money on the sad year, for example, so that we're sure that we have the kind of inventions we need.
Yeah.
So I'm not really comfortable with not spending that money at this point. So often at this point, I'd say, well, you know, we've had the beginning of the year, we bought our books, we're gonna buy, yeah, we have some money there. There, I don't have that ability to do right now, so probably not.
So this is just in addition to the budget we already have?
Yeah, really.
Yeah, so I know we, we did, um, some, some of that excess funding that we received for COVID stuff, we did push into the out years. Um, so potentially, this could come from that. We have that surplus that's sitting there, and that's, and if we, we will use it quicker if we don't get the student population up. So I absolutely agree that tapping into some of that to bring in more students, yes, that makes that income happen, it's positive. I just want to make sure that we've got, we've got it somewhere to pull from, even if it's next year that we're pulling from to.
Well, as far, you know, as far as that bottom line, and we discussed this a little bit. Well, as far, you know, as far as that bottom line, and we discussed this a little bit, that bottom line, we're positive, we will be positive this year because of the money that's come in. So as far as Chico Unified say, hey, you're going in the hole, we're not going to do that with this, that's not going to happen. You know, we can't spend this on learning gains money, but we can move some other things around so that we, yes, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. And do we have any projections on what they think it will bring? Are they giving any projections on that?
On what?
On like this month, like doing this campaign, the projections of what, yeah, how many students that would bring us?
They're, they're fully committed to us reaching our goals of enrollment, so.
But not like with this one.
They haven't, they haven't said, this will bring you X number down.
For months or something like that, yeah.
So when I talked about it in the finance meeting with Susan, one of the things I asked is like, could they maybe provide what leads we've gotten so far?
Yeah.
So that we can kind of see like how the Google campaign worked for us. Um, I'm not a huge fan of doing the Facebook ads.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to be like more targeted about it. And I think Maggie was in the meeting with us and she was talking about when we get enrollment. And I thought we should go heavier in those months. And so like, I think we were talking about November, December, January, because that's when we get the kindergarteners.
Yeah.
So maybe even target market them where it's more sort of targeted to younger students, to kindergarteners. And really, since a lot of those kindergarteners are staying home with parents, also even marketing it in a way that, you know, Blue Oak is like that same option. It's very much like a home.
Yeah.
Kindergarten, you know, it's, it's got that same feel and sort of finding a way to target that.
Yeah.
And then also Maggie was saying, I think everyone takes a little breathing period right after school ends and then they're back in the summertime looking for options moving forward. But I think that might even, I think they might not talk to us, but I think they start in the spring. I mean, I definitely think parents.
Yeah.
And then maybe the ones that are like, okay, I really need to do this or something happens or they get that last report card. And then they're a couple of weeks into the summer. So I had talked to Susan, see if we could bring it up here, maybe doing a more, because I think this was just a blanket in marketing plan, like just give me all you got.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean, but yeah.
I'll, I'll let you know too, just from a targeted advertising perspective, Facebook is actually one of the easiest platforms to do super targeted advertising. Well, but because when you generate, and I don't know how familiar everybody is with creating Facebook ads, but when you design and create your ad, then you can pick who sees that ad.
Yeah, I know that.
For displaying to you. So you could, you could, for instance, run an ad that only advertises to friends of people who already liked Blue Oak's page. And so like even that.
I think it's just me on social media.
I don't think it really has it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I just.
I'm like, I'm not looking that far, but, but it's good because it tracks through.
Yeah, both be really good and really wastefully expensive if you just put an ad on Facebook to everybody.
Yeah.
Because then you get, you know.
Yeah, I wonder.
People who don't actually have children or who anybody in this community or even live here.
Yeah, and I know they can target market, I mean, it can even go over from Google. So if you're searching it in Google, then like I said, it follows you and then all of a sudden Facebook is like, hello. So, yeah.
Talk about school at home, but all of a sudden the schools are reading advertisements.
Yeah. Alexa, what was that about? Yeah, so it, I mean, I, but I think all of them are great ideas. We've been, we've been kicked around like the billboard a little bit. I mean, it's expensive, but it's like a one-time fee. So it would be interesting to see exactly what we can do, but I thought the target months were a big deal too. And if we're going to spend the money, let's really, not stop necessarily what we're doing now, but like spend a little bit more in those months. So they're getting a lot, there's more exposure.
Yeah, multiple touches. Yeah, my comment would be like the TV, like I don't know how many people watch. But that's a very expensive one, so I'm sure they, yeah.
And I'm sure they have statistics on that.
They do, they still have cable and, and that TV is still.
You know how they get to their lives? It's because they bundle you.
Yeah.
Because everybody needs to do that and then they start.
If they have cable, do they watch commercials?
It's an expense.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I definitely don't watch commercials.
Yeah.
Well, this was everything, they threw everything.
Yeah.
It's not like we have to do it all, but it was just.
I think they did, and you know, advising us that if we're going to do one or the other, either billboards or TV, the TV was better.
Okay.
So they did.
Well, they want multiple different types of touches when they're designing a campaign. So you don't want to just do one either, because you know, it's not the first time that they see it that they engage usually.
Right. And there's probably timeframes they would want us to run things for, I mean, they wouldn't want to, you know, so.
Yeah, because that's how you get the thing through that.
Right.
I still remember the jingle for the McDonald's Big Mac that came out when I was in junior high.
Yeah, it's like, those are the things, because.
Yeah.
We're just very repetitive.
Yeah, you have all those taglines making. I think even though many people don't watch the commercials, I think so often they influence us more than they even realize. Like even in the background, even, you know, you hear those jingles, you hear those things and they plant that seed and then all of a sudden you're scrolling Facebook. And because your TV was talking about Blue Oak Carter School, now it's showing up on your Google search and your Facebook and your email. And so I think, I think that that's also a big part of this. So that's exciting. I mean, I, I've seen so much more from Blue Oak since we've started this advertising that just is solid. I love like the myth versus fact posts, I love the quotes. And, and I think it really does change our presence in this community. Because I've had other people who, you know, when I have lots of conversations, like three kids in three different schools, and lots of conversations with their parents, oh, where do your kids go to school? And when I say Blue Oak, there's a lot more people that are like, oh, I just saw something from there. Or, oh, it's not the school that, and then that statement is followed by like something that is actually true about our school. And I saw that on Facebook or Instagram, I'm like, yay! So it just, I feel like it's, it's been such a positive.
That's great.
No, I, I think it's great.
So do we, I mean, they're suggesting you're doing all of this or they're asking us?
These are the others that they are suggesting that we.
Do together.
We do. And, but you still have the right to say, we want to do this, we don't want to do that. I mean, we could, like, if you want to cut out the TV, we could cut out the TV.
And I assume.
But what about changing the months, like instead of doing seven months, doing like three months and three months? Or is it?
That's something that I can negotiate with them as far as like when we, like I can make you twice as much in November.
Yeah, right.
Not.
And I'm sure they probably have been looking at all of that data.
Yeah.
Because there's so much market research available for every type of consumer.
Yeah.
School shopping.
Well, do you recommend we drop the TV? Is that a thing? Because it's a.
You know, they kind of talked me into it, so I'm not, you know, they have good reasons for making that decision over the, the.
Billboard.
Billboards, which I was thinking we'd do billboards and they're like, well, no, this actually brings blah, blah, blah. Like, okay.
So is this?
So they, yeah.
Okay. This is monthly, right?
It would include monthly, so when you say like, yeah, one.
So the TV media.
Seven months, seven months, social media campaigns, so you can see that.
So you do the 24,000 total.
Total.
Is that total over seven months?
Yes.
It's actually not that bad.
Yeah.
That's actually not that bad.
No.
That's, I mean, if you think about.
24,000 a month, that would be very different.
It's, I mean, it's probably not the best way to say it, but if you think about when you gain a student, the income that comes into the school. And even, I mean, even when a student's not at school, the income you lose. And you think about if you're gaining a student, it's, it's really not that much money.
Right.
Right, it's like you forget a couple of students.
Thank you.
Those are spoilers.
Promise it's not 24,000 to be on the discussion.
All right.
Right, well, I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the MC2 marketing proposal as presented.
This is Tricia, I'll second it.
All right, and we have questions or comments? None?
I just have one quick comment. I think once we have a site and, oh, never mind. I'll, I'll hold that comment, thank you.
Thank you. All right, to the vote then, Laurel Hill Ward?
Aye.
Aye, Vicki Wannacott, aye. Amber Brown?
Aye.
Chelsea Parker?
Aye.
Tricia Teartua?
Aye.
Leannick Glander?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That's good. And that means we are moving on to our grade level reports. Riley and Nick?
Hello, hello. Here you are. We are doing well, I'm doing well, Nick, you're doing well. Yes. Um, we have our lovely presentation that was shared at the parent council meeting. I'm not sure if everyone here was able to make that. So we are sharing the presentation with, with teacher Cheryl. So I have that up on my computer, do I have sharing ability? Possibly. Let's see, yes, yes, I do, great. Ah ha, here we go. All right. Here we have some sweet moments from the Lily Rose kindergarten. Lots of plays happening. Playtime is so important in the life of the young child. They are glad to be together, creating new friendships, sharing ideas and working together. And in the Maple Rose kindergarten with teacher Cheryl, we have painting with two colors, fingernail dragons and their first soup, which I've seen more children also carrying vegetables in the hallway. Fun and wonderful things. This was the story of the invisible hunter, a Cinderella tale from the Mick Mack Nation. This was told in kindergarten, I believe it comes from a book called Truer Than True. And that, I know that book was written by one of my mentors in my program. So it's a fun collection of stories from all different nations. Grade one with Ms. Jennifer. Procedures are flowing like a ribbon and little voices are harmonious in song in first grade. The children are happy emergent readers learning their ABCs. We have been learning a new phoneme each day with its two phonemic symbols. So H is huh, right there, uppercase, lowercase. We'll finish Z by Halloween, woo hoo! That's just around the corner. We're learning how to write with precision, laying the foundation for sacred geometry in middle school. Needing to move my screen, I'm sorry, I keep going back and forth from our windows to the window I'm on. Okay, grade two with Mrs. McDonald. In second grade, we are learning long vowel patterns utilizing the trickster stories of the indigenous people of the Americas. We are also celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with, just ended on the 15th, by reading picture books and that celebrate and share the Hispanic culture and language. Here we have grade four with Ms. Sheila. Nearing the end of our zoology block in which we've experienced each animal through writing, recitation, drawing, painting and or clay modeling. These are horses and a couple of oysters modeled with Alkina beeswax clay, which is a fabulous clay. If anyone has ever had the experience of using that, it's wonderful. Grade four with Ms. Lee. In our math block, we are learning about factors. Students made posters to help them in this process. And then we have one poster over here to the left, the student is, is discovering prime and composite numbers on her own as she changes the image of two factors or three or more factors. These students are helping take care of the class library by making posters to help keep reverence. Fifth grade with myself, fifth grade is currently deep in a study of North American geography. We are finishing that this week. We have loved starting our block with beautiful geography of Central America, perfect timing for Hispanic Heritage Month. And I was able to get a donation of the Spanish English cookbooks for each student to take home. So every fifth grader was able to take home Cooking with Potter the Otter.
Oh.
And I was sent a few photos from families of students reading and cooking the recipes. And then we had our first botany block. This is fifth grade with Ms. Hunter or Mrs. Hamblin, excuse me, I'm still adjusting, with a plant classification project showcase. It was super fun, we had just about every class visit us while students demonstrated their knowledge. And then, oh, there we go. Seventh grade with Ms. Madera. During the first week of physiology, seventh grade students studied homeostasis, osmosis and the function of cell membranes through hands-on investigation. Grade eight with Ms. Jones. Eighth grade has been enjoying making zen tangle pumpkins to decorate the upper grades hallway. We have also started our first US history block. Then Mr. Meyer, did you want me to share your part? Did you care? Okay, I will share your part, I think that was a yes. And games, we have worked on developing strength, balance and focus in our opening activities through yoga routines, spatial dynamics and eurythmy exercises. In fourth through eighth grade, we have been playing various dodgeball games as well as a space ball and prisoner ball, as well as space ball and prisoner ball, excuse me. And first through third, we have been working on tossing, catching, rolling, kicking and safely and quickly forming circle. It is wonderful to get to know all of the students in the school. Handwork with Ms. Claire, in first and second grade, we've been working on making our knitting needles and getting started knitting. Here's a sweet photo of our first chicken of the year made by a second grader.
My son's chicken does not look like that.
Yeah. I didn't even know, that just dawned on me that one of mine was a chicken.
In third grade, the first project of the year has been weaving small wall hangings using wooden looms and upcycled T-shirts to cut into narrow strips to weave with. So we have some finished projects there.
Love it.
Yeah, those are cool.
In fourth and fifth grade, our first project of the year was collaging covers for our handwork journals. We talked about the concept of cohesion and making multiple images blend together to make one image. There were so many amazing, hilarious and thought-provoking collages made. The center picture is Mrs. Hamblin's class Hard at Work. On two Thursdays in September, third, fourth and fifth graders went on a field trip to the Chico Flax Farm where we were able to see the whole process of how flax is grown and all the steps it takes to make it into fabric linen. It was hot and a long walk there, but we made it. And I'll tell you, it was a journey, but it was so fun. Mrs. Sheila's class working with flax to the left and below Sandy Fisher, the founder of Chico Flax, demonstrating how to process flax into linen. And in the classroom during the botany block, Mrs. Hamblin and I each told a story about how flax was a gift to man to create clothing with. So it tied in so nicely. We have officially started working in the courtyard garden, woo hoo! We've been weeding, cutting back dead bushes and exploring all things in the soil like roots, bugs and worms. I believe that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Riley.
Thank you so much, as usual, it's the highlight of the evening. And we have item number five and 5.1 executive director's report, Susan.
All right, well, I'll read a few of the favorite moments that have come up in the last week or so. I love when the students are independently working, then collectively burst into one of our songs. Getting to spend a little bit of time in first grade, watching the students practice for the harvest festival and receiving the cutest birthday cards from Ms. Claire and the. and receiving the cutest birthday cards from Ms. Claire and the first grade class. The welcoming of seventh graders to Spanish today and a great soup. Those are just a few things that I would share that we, we continue to love having the children in and just marvel at their joy and generosity. Aside from that, of course, we've all mentioned the harvest festival and thanks to Nick and others who really made it possible. It was a joy to have everyone back celebrating together. The soup was excellent. People really loved the picture booths. Saw a lot of people going, look, we have a picture of the kids and their pumpkins together. So that was really well received and appreciate everyone being a part of that. And I did get a number of comments from parents about how nice it was to remember why we love Blue Oak. So there we are. We have the Halloween parade has officially been planned and that will be happening again last year, this year. Where people are like, can we do that? Yes, we can do that. Why wouldn't we be able to do that? So we are doing the Halloween parade again. So you'll be getting notices as parents about the rules for costumes, things like that. Well, so the Halloween dance was mentioned already as another thing we're going, can we do that? Yeah, we can do that. So let's do that. So we're doing that. The open house, the staff also chimed in and a lot of positive comments about it from them as well. Other than it was probably too long, which we all agree. We probably nobody came after six thirty, so we really didn't need to be there after that. So, you know, a few adjustments to that and, and how to work that into our schedule in the future. But a lot of, we're positive things about having the children go to more than one, be able to walk the families, be able to walk walk and see different teachers other than just their own. And the fact that the children were with them, you know, and the children were introducing their parents to their teachers and, and talking about it. So some real family-wide engagement. We did have George and Donna here. Nikki got a little bit of training on how to dance with children. So I've already seen some of that there and a lot of compliments to Donna, from Donna about what she saw happening in the classes. And then George Hofaker was also here. He's a mentor that's been with us before. And so he met with pretty much all of the classroom teachers, one-on-one or in small groups. So hearing his positive words reflected out, he is a great mentor and positive, you know, bringer of positivity. So and helping us all kind of figure out what we're working through. He, you know, he's we, he and I had a conversation at the beginning of his time and it was amazing. He kept going, you know what Waldorf said? And, and Steiner says, you know, so he could totally connect a lot of what we're going through to things that he could really support us through, through Waldorf and through Steiner. And he has a lot of strength in math and in other areas. So appreciated him. And then we also had Beaufort County Office of Education speakers come out again to speak to the middle school students about some mental health. You know, how to take care of their own mental health and deal with some of the things that they're, they're dealing with. So there. Then finally, the, we do have a fundraiser going on. And so next Tuesday, buying pizza from Mod Pizza. And the link will be going out, Parents Square and other things, places. So please buy pizza next Tuesday from Mod Pizza and, and benefit Blue Oak.
That's just a general.
Yeah, it's just a general fundraiser. We haven't had a lot of classes reach out and say, we wanna do the fundraiser. So when we have cool things come up, we're just doing them and hoping that the, the classrooms just start getting in the mode of it, it's that weirdness of coming out of COVID. People are like, we don't know what to do anymore. So we're just kind of prompting it. Here's what we're doing. You know, you could go do this.
We just got pizza tonight from Mod. Corbute was also doing a fundraiser and it was very well
attended.
Used. It was very busy.
That's good. Okay. Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah. And, yeah, Mod Pizza sent that out to schools like, hey, we'll do this, you know, we'd love to do that. So we're just going, okay, we'll do it.
Send my calendar. My, my teacher forwarded it out today.
So we'll work on that and then hope to do some work with the parent council about the getting back to kind of the classroom fundraisers again and what we need to do to get that started up. But, you know, takes some, a little bit of extra work right now to get people thinking in those terms, because we all kind of shut all that down for a while. That's my report.
So, sorry, I think it's, I know we already talked about the protest a little bit. And I just thought like, is there anything that we can do to ask, like people that wanna support that, but obviously want kids to come to school? Like any other ideas, maybe this school would have for parents to be able to be supportive of that sort of stuff without not sending their children to school? Does that make any sense? Is there any, like, certainly like to not lose enrollment, but still let them be supportive of what they're trying to achieve, you know?
Well, that's what, one of the.
Challenges that parents are having, like, cause they don't, they want the kids to come to school, but they wanna be supportive and they're trying to make a difference with the voice.
Well, that's what, you know, it sort of came on me like, oh, okay. So one of the things I committed to doing is once we gather the information about the day of the enrollment, and this time it will be about attendance, is to pass that on to CCSA and Charter. The other ones, there's two. Charter agencies that have advocates that work within state capital. And so we're sure that they are hearing from our parents, you know, what kind of an issue that is, the mandate vaccines. And so I can pass it through to our advocates and let them know. And then they're always yeah, and you know, I, I think overall the idea of wanting to stand up at this time and say, hey, are we sure we're buying a mandate vaccine right now? I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm just sorry that people felt they need to take.
I know. And that's the challenge when people are bringing it up. It's like, well, what else do you do? And, you know, and it's.
I think that's a hard thing as a parent, like how, how do you
Advocate for that with.
Show.
Yeah.
And for.
How do you, yeah, ensure that your voice is heard?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think so that was set for like a one-day protest specifically for that reason. And I mean, I, I thought it was a bummer that they were gonna pull kids out of school. I would have probably would have rather just seen them in front of the school while their kids were in school. And I thought that Susan sent a great email that kind of reminded us why it's important for them to be in many ways. But additional reasons why it's important. And for me personally, I just was like, I can't do that because I know that it means so much to the funding of this school. But I also understand some parents that felt like they needed to do something. So, you know, I, I think it was just that one time, I'm pretty sure. But it is a bit scary because when you see the numbers and the enrollment.
But I liked Tricia's question though, and maybe that's somebody, some, somebody, something that.
We should like redirect people.
Yeah. You can reach out to our advocates at the Charter, CCSA. Right. Because I mean, clearly.
Yeah.
Clearly we have parents who want to advocate. And I, I agree with you, Amber. It was a really hard
Yeah.
Thing of like, I, I want my voice to be heard, but I recognize how important it is for my child.
Are we gearing considerably off or onto a non-agendized topic?
We are.
And we talked about it earlier in the agenda and I just. I bring it up as part of the executive director's report. Yeah.
Okay.
That we can totally.
Just want us to always be mindful of Brown Act. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
We do not have item six any longer. So if we're, if we have further discussion, then we can continue with that. Otherwise, we are done with our meeting.